Good afternoon. Welcome to the Glendale Water and Power Commission meeting. Today is September the fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Can we please have roll call?
President Chan.
Present.
Commissioner Hale. Commissioner Camargo.
Here.
Commissioner Avanesian.
Here.
And Commissioner Law.
Here.
Next item, please.
Two consent items. A, approval of the August third, two thousand and fifteen meeting minutes.
I was not here, but I think the rest of the commissioners were. So do we have any changes, modifications, suggestions?
Yes, two, two small changes, actually. So on page two, under section two, water, the fourth line, one, two, three, fourth line down there was issued on January one, two thousand and thirteen. All CIP, I think it should read budgets.
Oh, yeah.
Missing a T. Budgets appropriated by.
Uh huh.
And then also on the last page, the electrical, under section seven, agenda forecast. So the electric, electrical storage update, I believe, is, is on the October agenda, not on the September agenda. I don't see it on the agenda for today, and it is on the forecast for October. So it's just an amendment in order to clarify that, that particular item, electrical storage update, is, is for the October meeting of the commission.
Okay. Okay, so with those changes, then the minutes will be approved. Okay? Next item, please.
Free GWP Commission staff comments.
Thomas today.
Madam President, just since, if you don't have any comments, and I, as, as we were talking about earlier, I have missed the last two meetings. So let me take this opportunity to welcome our two new members. We're very happy to have you. And later, I guess, we'll be finding out about a new president, but thank you, Ms. Chan, for a very good year, very productive year. The utility continues to move in a very positive direction, which makes me very happy and makes my boss very happy, as, as does the council. So that's no small part to the efforts of the commission assisting us. So, but thank you. I think it was a, it was a very good, productive year, and you did a fine job, and I just wanted to, to mention that.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that, and I share the same sentiments. I was gone the last two meetings. I want to thank all of the commissioners for doing such a great job, especially Commissioner Hale for filling in. And I want to also welcome our two new commissioners. It's great to have both of you. I understand, you know, you two come with fantastic background experiences, so I look forward to working this year with all four of you. Okay, so no other comments? No? Okay, next item, please.
For his action items, A, election for new commission president.
Is there a set procedure that you'd like us to follow?
There is. So Madam President, if you would just begin by opening the elections, and then you can take nominations first for secretary and then for the president, and then hold the vote to see.
Okay, okay. So now we proceed to the election process. Now I open for nomination for secretary. Do I have a nomination?
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Camargo as secretary.
Okay, great. Now we take a vote, right?
Well, let's see if there are any other nominations.
Are there any other, other nominations? No?
Hearing none, then you can do the nominations for president, or you can proceed with elections for secretary?
We can finish with secretary too, first, yeah. Why don't we do that? So let's vote.
Okay.
So just all say aye, right?
You can do that, say all those in favor.
All in favor.
Of Commissioner Camargo for secretary, please say aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So the motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you.
And then you would want to do the nominations for president.
Right, okay. Now can I have nomination for president, please?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to nominate as president for the Glendale Water Power Commission, Commissioner Hale.
Okay. Any other nominations? Seeing none? I'll say, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Commissioner Hale, you're the new president.
Thank you.
And, okay, so why don't he and I switch seats, so he can carry on the rest of the meeting?
Definitely.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Great. Should take the main tab.
Doesn't work with your ensemble, anyway.
No, it doesn't work with you. Commissioners, thank you for the vote of confidence and for the opportunity to serve with all of you. It's a really remarkably, I think, effective commission, and one with a great deal of intellect and a great deal of commitment to service and making GWP the best utility we can, we can possibly make it. So with that, unless there's any other steps we need to take, I think we'll go on to the next item.
Action for, action item four B, renewable portfolios standard update in California Senate Bill three fifty-one, motion making recommendation to city council regarding SB three fifty.
Mr. President, members of the commission, unfortunately, on this, timing got the best of us. We, this is a special meeting, as you know, that we moved our regular meeting that was conflicted with the holidays. So that meant we missed the last session of the California Assembly. So the bills had been pushed through in what was a wild week, to say the least, not just for us and GWP and the utility, but, but for many other folks as well. The, the big topic here was SB three fifty, sometimes referred to as the fifty-fifty-fifty bill, where the governor aggressively was looking through Senator De Leon of Los Angeles, looking to increase the current RPS, renewable portfolio standard for utilities from thirty-three percent to fifty percent by two thousand and thirty, to reduce gasoline consumption by fifty percent in two thousand and thirty, and to improve the energy efficiency of existing structures, existing buildings, by fifty percent by the year two thousand and thirty. So as we went through this, a lot of our activity regarding this was done through the California Municipal Utilities Association. As you can imagine, all the utilities, investor-owned as well as publicly-owned utilities, went to the table and joined in on this. I'll have to tell you, they held, they being Senator De Leon and backed by the governor, held a very hard line on this all the way through the negotiations, although our position along with that of CUMA and SCAP, the Southern California Public Power Authority, was support if amended. And essentially, what we were looking for was, we certainly agreed with the need to continue to pursue renewables, to up the, the portfolio to fifty percent, but what we asked for on the electric side was to, a little more flexibility in how we achieve that. It's very prescriptive, we thought, and each individual utility, depending on how big you are, how small you are, what part of the country you're in, what your climate is, it all could make a difference. So we just were looking for a little flexibility, and there wasn't a whole lot of reciprocation on that particular issue. We were looking to see if we could get more renewable portfolio standard credit for things like rooftop solar and behind the meter, even if that's wind. That was something that was out there for a while and then was taken away and, and never came back. So that, that was consistent in, in our proposed amendments, was that we, we include that, and inevitably, what's sitting on the governor's desk for signature did not include that. We asked that some of us, especially those who have substantial investment in hydro, large hydro projects, that we get some measure of credit for that. As you may or may not be aware, under the first RPS, large hydro, primarily Hoover, was excluded. So you weren't allowed to take credit for that. We're an original member of Hoover, so that's a very big part of our overall portfolio. So there was a, there was some discussion, a lot of, quite a bit of discussion, quite frankly, on, on us getting some, along with others, as I'll say, some love in the RPS for, for the hydro. Another, another issue that was especially concerning was a requirement that sixty-five percent of our renewable energy contracts be of length ten years or more, so long-term contracts. I'll be very honest with you, that's primarily a labor issue, like the long-term contracts. For Glendale, it isn't a very big issue, because most of our contracts are ten years or more. It really affected some of the smaller utilities more, who, they go into these deals with not as much capital and not as much ability to sign these long-term contracts, looking for the shorter term, so it really affected them. But again, we, we didn't have a lot of asks, and we stuck together on that. At the end of the day, and then there was an eleventh hour injection of a integrated resource plan requirement. Each year, we must put together an integrated resource plan that has to be submitted to the California Energy Commission. We unanimously oppose that. Some, some utilities were okay if it went in, but we opposed it because we already do these IRP documents, we already file them per other regulations, and we weren't sure, quite frankly, if the California Energy Commission was the right body to oversee us as utilities, period, and much less renewable portfolio plan and plan updates. But inevitably, that was what is, was, was passed by the Senate and the Assembly as well. So this now sits on Governor Brown's desk, awaiting a signature. I have no reason to believe it won't. As you may have read in the paper, a lot of the eleventh hour wrangling on this came down to the oil and gas industry pressure, along with moderate Democrats who ended up backing away from the gasoline reduction. So that was stripped completely from the bill. That left the RPS component and the energy efficiency component. So those two are still in it, and despite our best efforts, in fact, we had our meeting, and I say our meeting, the city council held their meeting, was city hall in your neighborhood, it was at the Brand Library a couple of weeks ago. We were given direction by the council to put together a letter of support, which we did, and I believe everybody got a copy of that. So that was a direction from the mayor to put together, then that was our support if amended, and you can see the details in there of what I, what I just went over with you. So now we'll wait and see. Again, you know, some of, some of what was included in there will be more of a, an administrative nuisance, and we'll have to have us restructure how we, we do some of our reporting, but certainly nothing that's, that's not achievable or that we can't overcome. The contract issue, as I said, for Glendale is not a big deal, because most of our contracts are long-term, far in excess of ten years. And, you know, we're going to continue. We didn't need the state legislator, legislature to tell us to move towards more renewable energy, we were doing that already. Our council has consistently driven us in that direction, and they, they weren't satisfied with us stopping at thirty-three percent, if that in fact is what the law or the regulation included. We were going to keep moving forward on that. So we will continue to look for opportunities to bring more renewables into the, into our portfolio. We've done extremely well, quite frankly, and I know this says an update on RPS, so I will do that, I'll take the liberty of giving you that update. We're, for all intents and purposes, we're, we are at the two thousand and twenty, the thirty-three percent mark. We have, if not currently active, we have contracts in place that will put us in excess of the thirty-three percent. So what does that mean? It means a lot, because that gives us a cushion. Now, as the fifty percent goes into effect, we have the ability to be a little more selective in what we get into. As you can imagine, as people come closer to that deadline, and you have to start looking at projects that maybe wouldn't be as attractive, and, and if you had more time to, to debate them, but as you get desperate, when they're not attractive, that usually means they're not cheap. So we have that cushion. We may have seven or eight years before we ever have to make any kind of long-term commitment. That gives us a great opportunity to negotiate, and I think prices will stay down. This last year, our portfolio, the one-year portfolio, and again, one year doesn't make, doesn't make a full portfolio, was forty-five percent renewable. So if we could consistently hold on to that, we're not that far from the new fifty percent. So we've done very well. Another mark there is, as we re-increase that, we lowered our coal usage to about less than, well, probably less than ten percent. So three years ago, our coal portfolio was about thirty to thirty-five percent of our use. So in three years, we're down to less than ten percent coal. And as you all know, that's going to go down, continue to go down, as we phase ourselves out of San Juan and ultimately phase ourselves out of, well, coal will be phased out of, of IPP. Whether or not we phase ourselves out of that will, still remains to be seen, but we will not have coal assets any longer. So, and of that, five and a half percent is Hoover. So if you put another five and a half percent on that forty-five point four, or over fifty, if we could use Hoover now, that remains to be seen. But when you're talking about, a renewable is a renewable that is not a fossil fuel-generated source of electricity, I think we're doing very, very well. So I'm, I'm looking forward to the opportunity for us to look, continue to look at, we have a, a pretty sizable number of wind projects, we have a very long-term solar project that we entered into with Skylar. I think there's some opportunities with geothermal, because I think diversity in our portfolio is very important. We're not putting all of our eggs in one basket. As some of you may have seen, that can come back to bite you, as wind patterns in the western United States are shifting, some people aren't sure, the wind is down this year across the western United States. Okay in California, not so okay in the Rocky Mountains, and unfortunately, that's where we get our wind from, the Rocky Mountains. That's, it's, it's considerably double digits below normal, and in the Pacific Northwest, it's down as well. So not putting all of our eggs in, in one basket, as I said, because things can happen. You have to deal with the daily issues of solar versus wind, you know, ideally, the wind blows at night, when the, when the sun goes down, and during the day, you get the sun, but we know that doesn't always work out either. And, and if we get inclement weather for any period of time, we need to rely on other sources. Geothermal is one of those, in the west, at least, appears to be plentiful enough for us to take a good, hard look at. And again, we're always concerned about what we can get that goes into our grid, to our transmission system. So overall, we're doing very well. Three fifty, would have been nice if we could have got some of those amendments, we'll be fine with it. I think more than anything, it was a sense that both POUs and, and the investor-owned utilities felt they were being penalized or punished for being utilities, and that they were the source of all evil, and then gasoline kind of, oil and gas industry kind of got to walk away from this. And I think, I don't, I didn't look at it that way, it's just, that's the natural place to go. The utility industry and electrical production is where there is a lot of, of greenhouse gas emissions, a lot of pollution that's generated over the years, especially for heavy hydrocarbon usage and coal and, and gas, or coal and oil, and to some extent, natural gas. So I think this is, is going to be fine and workable for us, and, and falls right in line with what our goals are, anyway. And as you can see, where we're, we're headed, we're already substantially well on our way to maintaining that standard and, and go beyond that. So all in all, good. Let me go down a couple of other things.
Before you move.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you move away from this, I do have a couple of questions. May I?
Sure.
Okay. So these amendments that you mentioned, we don't have a definite answer on that yet, right? We're still waiting.
The bill that's sitting on the governor's desk is, does, does not contain any of these amendments that we.
Does not contain?
Does not contain any.
Okay.
It was passed without any of these amendments.
Okay, all right.
The, the governor does have the ability to, to insert amendments, the chances of that are almost nil.
Yeah.
I would not bet, bet anything on it, that he would change.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to get a clear understanding of that. And then when you mentioned that last year, the renewables percentage was forty-five percent, I was just wondering, what did that comprise of?
Primarily, we have, we have wind, we have a small hydro project in the Pacific Northwest at Tiotin. We have a little bit of geothermal, and we bought the rest of it on the open market.
Bought recs.
Bought recs and bought power. And that could have been anything from solar to wind to whatever was, was the, the best price that day.
Okay.
You may recall that, in, in addition to the San Juan project, we signed a ten-year agreement with a company, actually, it was reassigned to a company called Macquarie, to sell off our coal assets. And we sold them at a profit, and we turned around and took that money and bought renewable energy with it. And renewable energy, we got good prices all year long. So that's, again, a strategy you're always looking at.
Did you buy it just for one year, or it's for a number of years?
No, everything that, that, that I'm referring to is on, was bought on the market that day for, for short term.
For a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Skylar project I spoke of is a thirty-year agreement, the longer-term.
Okay.
Solar and/or other renewable. We opened that contract up so that it could include any renewable.
Uh huh. So last year was forty-five percent, and based on what we currently have in place, what you are currently looking at as potential projects, and the amount of money we made and all that, what do you anticipate next year's number would be?
Well, I'd like to at least maintain that same forty, forty-five percent number. But I mean, we, we are, once December, end of December, when the Skylar project goes into effect, will certainly be at a minimum right there at about that thirty-three percent. But I'd like to, for us to be able to keep it up and have that flexibility, again, as I said, because we're not, our backs aren't to the wall, like some of the utilities. So we can go out, and if the market's good that day, we don't buy coal and we buy, we buy renewables. And they have been relatively cheap on the daily market. That's not going to hold up. As, as, as the recs and the energy become more valuable, as you get closer to two thousand and twenty or two thousand and thirty, twenty, even with two thousand and thirty, you're going to have compliance periods that you're going to have to meet. Those prices are going to start to go up. So we're just taking advantage of the market now, and we're early enough on that we can. And that's all about building the portfolio sooner rather than later, and not waiting till, you know, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, to try to, to eke your way into that thirty-three percent, but being, being proactive enough to get, get out there right away.
Yes, I, GWP is great. You and the staff, you know, are great in terms of, you know, doing all the planning and trying to, you know, get the renewables and all. I, I was approached, and I was asked about plans for solar, you know, with the utility. And I understand there are some discussions right now with possibly maybe getting some additional solar, or?
We have not had any, any, you're talking about solar.
Yays.
Oh, no, no, we haven't, haven't gotten to that point yet. But we are just sort of scratching the surface on what, what we refer to as community solar.
Okay.
So the idea being, especially since three fifty's not going to give us the love we wanted on the, on the behind-the-meter solar.
Right.
That we start looking at opportunities for us to develop sites where we can put community solar, and that's our solar system that then we sell the electricity off of that.
Okay.
So, but we really just begun. Mr. Abueg will be attending a couple of meetings, the largest solar conference is coming up very shortly in Anaheim. He's going to be attending a few of those meetings and meeting with some of these companies. Obviously, in, as a municipality, we have bidding requirements and competitive bidding requirements, so we'll have to take a long, hard look at how that works out.
Right.
But we're not putting anything off the table, so we're looking at the top of reservoirs, to landfills, to, to parking lots, where we can, we can possibly put together these, what they call community solar projects.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I don't want to interfere or anything like that, you know, I was just going to ask, and, and this was brought up, so I did send Mr. Abueg an email, just trying to, you know, see what the position is, what Glendale Water and Power's position is. And, yeah, please go ahead and carry on and look at all those possibilities and go through the bidding process, et cetera.
Right. We, we are entertaining council tomorrow, an agreement with Skylar for the potential future development, but that's, that's simply an option to, to develop at a later date. So that's kind of the first step, but there's no firm commitment at, at that level either. And that's just at the landfill, so we've got a lot of other opportunities that we're looking at. In the landfill, we're not even sure what that's going to look like in the future. So that's kind of a, kind of a foot in the door, sort of placeholder, to see if that's something that maybe works out for us fifteen or twenty years from now, but right now, we're looking at the possibility of developing some type of community solar much sooner than that.
Uh huh, uh huh. Yeah, and I remember we used to get like regular updates, you know, with what, what your plans are in terms of like renewables. So if, if that is agreeable to the rest of commissioners, I think it'd be great if you can give us like a regular update, like every quarter or so, unless you want it more often.
We have in the past given a yearly update, where we show, again, those numbers, and somehow we missed it, and so.
Maybe yearly is not quite enough, I feel, I don't know.
Because our, that's when our plans put together, that's when our RP is put together.
Oh, okay.
We don't change a whole lot during the year, but we can update you if there is a change on that. But at least once a year, to come back and report what occurred the previous year, what we have planned for the coming.
Okay, okay. And that's part of the IRP?
Yeah, to be a little bit more detailed than what I did today. So, yeah, we'd put it as part of, of, of the IRP, that's, that's probably the best way to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think from my perspective, what would be useful to know is what you have engaged in terms of a long-term contract, what have you purchased as a spot market purchase, and, and where is our sort of compliance vulnerability in terms of if spot prices go up and we're sort of relying on the spot market to, to do, you know, rec compliance for, with the RPS, that, that would be a little bit concerning, but.
And that's not where we're at. That just happened to be what blew us up this year and made it really good, we were able to trade coal for renewables, but, you know, our longer-term stuff is what's locking us into, at least at thirty-three percent, now we've got a little bit further to go.
And that, that's where I'd like to sort of see where the loading order is and get kind of a prospective timeline of what, what we anticipate the, the RPS is going to look like in the next few years here.
Sure. So just briefly, is some other legislation that affects the utility, that there was two primary issues, AB thirteen thirty, which had to do with our energy efficiency targets, procurement targets. That was not advan, that is not going to advance in this session, that will go back for discussion next year. AB thirty-two, which was the long-term greenhouse gas reduction goals, and that also is not going to make, it did not make it through this session, so that's going to go back for more discussion with legislators, and, and they're hoping to bring it back next year and, and get passage on that. So those were two of the, of the really significant ones. From the water side, Assembly of Mungato's bill on, on artificial turf went through, and what that does is, it prohibits municipalities or agencies, prohibits the agencies from prohibiting artificial turf, but allows us to set certain standards, as long as those aren't economically cumbersome or regulatory-wise too cumbersome for somebody to, that wants to install. So our planning department, our community development department, I should say, is, is really going to take up the lead on that, because it'll fall to them and some of their landscape requirements and how those will mesh in with that. And that was really, there was a number of my, other minor bills, there was some, some significant stuff on security of plant and facilities, which really is more, is just something Homeland Security's been after on and getting on since, since the incident last, two, a year ago, April, when PG&E's facility was sabotaged, and that kind of sent a scare throughout the utility industry. So all of us have been working on that and, and trying to, to harden those potential targets in any municipalities, as I think you've seen the pictures of the proposed upgrade of Grandview Substation, where we enclose it all, not that traditional, you know, where you see the rack outside and it's very accessible for just throwing something over a fence, but we've got it contained, we've got it, you know, more secure walls, and I think that's where you're going to see this go in the future. So again, three fifty was the big, big item. Thirteen thirty and thirty-two, I think, just fell behind the shadow of three fifty, and then, and instead of losing those two, I think their, their authors decided to pull back on those and bring them back, bring them back next year. So, and the other thing I think that we're going to definitely see, what, how, what configuration it's in when, when they bring it to us, is the net energy metering issue. That's, President Hale and I had a brief discussion about that, too. It's just something I think is a hot topic, and that has to do with, how are you going to balance that payment to rooftop solar and incentivizing it, but at the same time, not, not hurting other customers who don't have the ability to have that solar? In other words, you're having a subsidized group, keeping in mind that you can't leave the grid, and somebody has to continue to pay for the maintenance of that grid. So that'll be an interesting discussion as that moves along. And, and I, I've seen that they, again, have brought up the situation in Hawaii, where they're having a really difficult time there, and, and all, they already have the highest electrical rates in the United States, and they're looking at doubling those because of their, their poor planning in this whole net energy metering situation, and in Europe. Europe really went out early on this and then didn't realize that who's going to pay, pay for the grid, and you can't isolate yourself, you can't become an island, you have to be connected in, and, you know, there's balancing and there's, there's just other things that take place. And you know, there's balancing and there's just other things that take place, there's the smoothing of the solar. So those are all things I think you're going to see are going to be hot topics on both sides. You can see the utilities wanting to set rate structures that better cover the future of the utility in that regard. And you're going to see, want to see people, especially at the legislator level, that want to greater, provide greater incentives to go solar. So an interesting discussion. So that's all for that on the legislation. Legislation, excuse me.
Any other questions?
I was just curious, I've done some research on programs in other areas of California where low-income folks can access solar energy that is actually present in other locations. So for instance, if you have people who are renters who do not have the ability to put solar panels on their home, they could purchase solar energy through like a community solar program. So I was just wondering if there was any discussion within GWP of making, for instance, this community solar available for customers who might be receiving a subsidy on their bill or something like that to make the benefits of solar energy a little more widely available throughout the community?
Absolutely. And that's really kind of the basis of community solar is you can provide it to those who, in, for instance, apartments and those who may be low-income or senior and have limited incomes. And we already have a subsidized rate structure for our low-income and our seniors, so that can be adapted right into the community solar as well. But absolutely, I think that's one of the main benefits of a community solar operation is to bring it to those who, for whatever reason, wouldn't have that access that some other residents do.
Any other questions? I just have one. Does the bill, does SB 350 prescribe the manner in which we do our IRP process annually? Because it might not be too cumbersome to do the full-freight IRP on whatever planning process you already have and then do yearly updates or yearly amendments. So that way you're doing the compliance with the letter of the law or at least the spirit of the law and the letter of the law and hopefully not, you know, having to do the full-freight, hire consultants, do the full bore IRP process that you're doing right now.
And that's, while the details are still pending, that was our hope, that part of the current process requires that we put together these IRPs and we can simply do, as you said, maybe synopsis of those. And that seems to be the direction because, again, there was a lot of consternation on the part of the utilities about having a CEC oversight. They just aren't, that was not what they were built to do and they doubted their expertise and their staffing levels to do that. The IRP was sold by some members of the legislature as a way of being transparent and holding our feet to the fire, but you know, that's, it's a redundant issue because our feet are already being held to the fire and we have to report on both, you know, our carbon reduction, our recs and our renewables as well. So it was a little perplexing in that regard, but I agree 100% with you, President Hale. I hope that's the way it works and we can just simply take, you know, the information, you know, I hate to, I don't want to minimize it as a cut and paste, but you know, we're already doing a very detailed document. It's something that we don't have on our website now, but I'd like to get it out on the website so people can see that IRP at any one time. And then we just take part of that and submit it to the CEC each year.
Or just updates on what happened over the last year, you know.
I agree. I would love for that.
A contract we said we were going to enter into, we entered into it, so.
And I think that's the anticipation because there was a lot of, there were several utilities that while they didn't like it, they weren't going to draw the line in the sand on that particular one. And that really became the consensus of most of us, is like, that wasn't the one we were going to, the hill we were going to die on for this particular issue.
I have a question. In regards of adding all this solar power, as you may know, there is a limit for that. Is there any study showing really how much power you can inject to our distribution system? Because from the reactive power, you know, power point of view and protection system settings will be changed when you're injecting power. Is there any study showing, you know, how it works?
At this particular point in time, if it is a big enough project, we haven't seen anything that's been so big that we've had that concern. However, we've had a couple of people come to us and they're proposing larger-scale projects. So we're requiring full-blown studies of our system to determine what the impact will be, if it's even feasible to do it. And then from there, if it is feasible and the system can handle it, negotiating that in a little different light where it isn't so much just this flat incentivized, yeah, bring it, we love it, wait a minute now, there's some issues that are involved here that you need to be aware of and that you're going to be responsible for. You know, you want to put four-megawatt system in, that's big. So you know, you're going to have to, there may be upgrades that are necessary, there may be services that we provide that you cannot avoid paying for. But first and foremost, as you say, can the system handle that? And if it can't, then we're not going to pursue it. We can't jeopardize the rest of the electrical grid and the reliability issues that are important to the rest of the city. It may mean that we, on a long-term capital improvement basis, begin to fortify certain areas of our system so that we can be ready for larger solar in the future, but we won't jeopardize the current infrastructure. And yes, we do, we do take a long, hard look at that.
Thanks. Anything else on this one? Next item.
Five is reports, a conservation drought update, Michael DeGhetto.
So Mr. DeGhetto Show from here on out, drought update and an update on chromium six. And Mike's going to give you the details, but you know, I've been asked to go out in the community a couple of times to talk about this and alls I can say is what a great job the residents of the city of Glendale have done. Just an outstanding job. I mean, it makes you feel really good when you know in a city that you, as well as I've been in for many, many years, people take a lot of pride in their landscape and their yards. For them to make that sacrifice, I know it would be, it has been hard for me, too, but they haven't, they haven't wavered. And I think they deserve a tremendous amount of credit. Keep it up. We got a ways to go yet as we get to the home stretch and we'll see what the future holds. But again, whenever I get the opportunity to compliment and thank the community for their efforts, I don't hesitate to do that because they have done one great job. So with that, I'll let Mike give you the details.
President Hale, members of the commission. My name's Michael DeGhetto, Assistant General Manager for Water, Glendale Water and Power. And I'm going to give an update on the drought and the data that I have this time is from August, our latest reporting data. And as I usually start off, we're in Phase Three, which is two days a week watering, no more than 10 minutes at each station. And like I talk about, our water comes from two sources, the state water project and the Colorado River aqueduct. And the reason the drought, the statewide drought affects us is because of low snowpack up in the Sierra as well as the supplies from the Colorado River. Basically, 70% of Glendale's water comes from the Metropolitan Water District, it's And 30% from local groundwater, which again is limited based on the judgments in the basin, limits our extractions in the San Fernando Basin and then actually in the Verdugo Basin, we're limited right now because of the groundwater level, because there's been so little precipitation in the area. And so the update at this point is, for July, is 27.4%. So as Mr. Zern indicated, everyone's doing a great job. And as we've talked about, our rolling average since we implemented Phase Two last August is 12.8%. So as we go along and have those higher percentages, our overall percentage will go up, our average percentage. And again, the goal for Glendale is 20% and that's between June and February. So June of 2015 and February of 2016. Enforcement activities that we report on, again, we sent out 473 first warnings, 56 second warnings, zero third warnings this reporting period. And we mailed out 24 letters of folks that we could tell had leaks on their side of the meter, 31 calls to customers and 36 field visits. And so this time I thought I'd talk a little bit about what we mean by zones or stations as well as kind of how to set the irrigation controllers. And so when we talk about those zones, basically what I have in the picture here are the control valves that feed a zone. So each one of those feeds an irrigation zone, so there's three zones in this case. And there's some electrical wires on there and those control a solenoid that opens the valve to let the sprinklers run off of those zones.
In that picture, you would be allowed 10 minutes at each one of those?
Yeah, each one of those stations. Yeah. And then, of course, there's all kinds of different irrigation controllers. So, you know, the one in the top right, it's kind of like setting a digital watch. You have to scroll through each of your settings because it's really just buttons and like little digital readout. The one on the left's got a dial and some buttons. And then the one kind of in the bottom right has both dials and buttons. And in each one of those pictures, so like I'm showing Tuesday on, so whatever station I was on on that one is a day that you can be on. On the one on the bottom right, it kind of, it shows the stations and it looks like there's maybe five stations programmed and they're each 10 minutes. And one thing to note in there, it has like Program A, so a lot of the controllers have different programs you can run through, too, like an A, a B, a C. And it might have start times as well. And again, you can, the controllers are really set up in a way where you can water twice a day or you can water three times a day, you know, but of course, we've got our restrictions right now, so you want to make sure that your controller's set not to do that. And so on this one, again, let's see, on the first, in the first picture, it's on run, which would be, mean it, means it's running automatically. So what might happen sometimes is when you go to program your controller, you might forget to put it back in run. So you've got to remember to do that. And right now it's showing, let's see, start times. So that one's, I got it starting at 7:00 AM and I'm in Program A, so I'm using that cycle A. In the second picture, it's like, so I'm on Wednesday, so I'm off, right? Because we're only supposed to do Tuesdays and Saturdays. I've got that on the schedule, like what day. And in the third picture, see on station number two, we've got it set at 10 minutes. And again, I'm on that, on that bottom button, I'm in the program mode. And before, you know, when I finish taking those pictures, I've got to remember to set it back on run. And it's really, it's understandable how that's complicated to look at. That's, when we run all of our pump stations and we run our water system, we use what they call programmable logic controllers, which are basically little computers where we can set up all the pump stations and everything that we run, the wells, the reservoirs and all those things. So it's like, you know, maybe 10, 20 times more complicated than this. And that's kind of what you're doing at your house is you're setting up a little programmable controller to run your irrigation system. So.
Excuse me for interrupting.
Yes.
These systems that you're showing are demonstrations of what the utility's doing? Or are you saying like customers would be, this is what the customer should be?
Looking at at their house when they set their controller. Yeah, yeah. And I'm just kind of showing that there's a lot of different things to pay attention to when you do set your controllers. You know, you've got to look at each zone, you've got to make sure they're all, say, 10 minutes if you want to do 10 minutes and that they all start at the correct times.
One of the biggest questions we've had since we started was about the timers. There are so many different kinds of timers. Somebody will say, I've had a timer for 20 years, I couldn't set it if I had to. Sometimes gardeners will reset them. I don't know if it's just because it's like, wait a minute, you know? I don't know if it's a full employment act to make sure the grass grows so that they can continue to mow it. But, but part of it is they go, and then when the gardener's gone, there's nothing I can do. So that's why Mike's talking a little bit about it today and through our public outreach, we've got, and our website, we've got contacts and we've tried to locate every YouTube video we can that shows people programming these, as many different models and types as we can, so that folks can help themselves do that. Because that's, it's one of the bigger complaints we get. It's also when we send a letter out, they'll go, I don't know how to set this timer. I mean, this thing just goes off. I don't know when it goes off or how to change it. So we've tried to focus a little bit more on that and directing people to as many information sources as possible to help them with that.
And that's on our webpage?
It's on our webpage and if you can't somehow access it there, if you call our Public Benefits Office, our Community Outreach folks will direct you right where you need to go.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we actually have a posting where it says, "How to program your irrigation controller." And it talks about the stations, the valves, the zones, about those, what I mentioned about you might have multiple programs running and not be aware of it. And then it has some links, as Mr. Zern said, to some videos you can look at, too, how to do that.
Be sure to reset your irrigation control after you have a power outage, speaking from experience.
Very good point. We've had those, too, like, again, you know, the power went out, now what do I do? Or we had the time change, that was a big one, when the time changed and that somehow threw some of these timers off, so.
Yeah. And, you know, really another thing to do is, is go out to your valves and run it and see what's going. You know, go in one morning and see what's going, see if you have broken sprinkler heads, see, hey, it's running, but I don't see any water coming out and maybe there's a leak, maybe there's a broken pipe in the irrigation system itself. So, and another thing that you can do, I mean, there's a lot of, like in the controller, it has numbers in it, you know, all those, all the numbers like which station, is you might run it and just take the permanent marker and write it on your valve to, okay, this one's number three, you know, this one's number two. And then that way you know when you're programming that controller, like which valves doing what, you know, which area. And that's really, and then, of course, we've got our webpage with our links about kind of plants, how to save water, and then any of the rebates that are still available. Any questions?
Commissioner Camargo. Yes, Mr. DeGhetto, question. Earlier in your presentation, under enforcement activities, you had a notation there with field visits and 36, so that you've conducted 36 of these field visits. Can you talk more about that? What are the nature of those field visits? And especially if there's a cost or a fee associated with those visits to the customer?
Some of the field visits, no, so there's no cost associated to the customer. The field visit might be to verify if the customer actually is using as much water as it seems like or if there was maybe a complaint about a certain address that seemed like they weren't following the actual times or dates. Field visits might go out to verify that and take a look at those things as well.
And now, a field visit could verify the issuance of a citation, should be, would be the leg for issuance of a citation. So while we have not issued a citation, we are fully prepared to do that and essentially started this month, more or less, having our folks trained through the city attorney's office. And for those who are, as I've said to the press and to the community, egregious violators, folks who we've recorded have just flat thumbed their nose at us. And again, going back to what I said to begin this whole thing, it's the great work that all the residents have done, it isn't fair. And so we'll go into the citation process where you could be, get fines of $100, $200 or $500, $100, $300 or $500? Christine, so.
I'm going to defer to Ms. Marterosian, our water attorney.
Up to $500 for repeat offenders. So those who were the third violation could be, could be facing as much as a $500 fine.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Commission members. The first offense is, or the first violation is $100, then it jumps to $200 and $500 within a 12-month period. Subsequent violations within that same 12-month period would be $500 each.
So we're hoping we don't have to issue any of those and just maybe the fact that we've publicized that that citation process is starting will be enough to get people to comply. And again, it's a small handful of folks who are doing that. Most of the folks have complied through the education and information aspects of our program.
Any other questions on the drought and conservation update? Why don't we move on to Chrome Six?
AB Chromium Six report, Michael DeGhetto.
President Hale, members of the commission. My name's Michael DeGhetto, Assistant General Manager for Water, Glendale Water and Power. And I'm going to give an update on the Chromium Six research project. And I wanted to start with, what is Chromium Six? And of course, there's actually... And, and of course, there's actually several ways to write it. I start out with Chromium Six, Roman numerals, hexavalent chromium. And what it is, is it's one of the ions of the element chromium. And like many metallic ions, it can be present in water. And when it's in, present in water, they're typically in solution at the molecular level. So they're basically molecules. And, which is a little bit different when there's a particle in a water, which is a little bit larger, and, and we would call that in suspension as opposed to being in So when we talk about it, we talk about concentration, and that's a term of measurement of constituents that would be in water, what the concentration is. So the studies for the Chromium Six removal in Glendale were to treat the water to a concentration of less than five parts per billion, which is the same thing as five micrograms per liter, which is another way to say that unit of concentration.
Mr. DeGhetto, question on that slide regarding the concentration levels. So I recall that, I think it was in 2014 or so, that the Department of Public Health established a new standard for those concentration levels. And I recall it was higher than this, but can you, can you refresh my memory on that?
Yeah, so when the studies started, there was really no maximum contaminant level for chromium and Chromium Six. And this, this was back in the late 1990s, early 2000s. In 2015, the Division of Drinking Water at the state, which is, is the regulation, regulator that oversees our water quality, came out with MCL of 10. So when these studies started, it was five parts per billion was the goal of the studies to see if, what could cost-effectively be used to bring the concentration down to that level. Additionally, the, the city council did set a goal of five parts per billion for Glendale.
And they have continued to stand by that. So as the, the new standards were being set, we, all of our correspondence with those in setting those standards were that this would be the standard for the city of Glendale, regardless of what the state set.
Yeah, very good. I appreciate the fact that we're exceeding standards, the, the minimum requirements, I guess I should say, as established by the state.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment here.
Yes.
In, in saying you said that this ion is same as, is a molecule, actually, from chemistry, I remember that ion is a part of molecule, it's not a molecule.
Hmm.
The part of molecule.
It's a part of a molecule, okay.
Just to be correct.
All right.
And Mr. DeGhetto, what informed the state's decision to select 10 parts per billion as their, their standard? Was there some sort of latitudinal study of?
Yeah, there's studies related to the risk and, and what the health effects potentially could be. And they, and they go through a process. There's a part of the state called Oihah that sets a public health goal, and then from their Division of Drinking Water goes through studies and analysis over time to set the maximum contaminant levels. And again, the EPA hasn't set, hasn't set MCL for Chromium Six yet, so the state's a little bit out ahead on that. And to give an idea, so five parts per billion is like dissolving two teaspoons of salt in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. Now, I was trying to, trying to say how, like, to give everybody an idea of what that concentration it would be like. So the, the thing that's hard about that then is if you come to me and ask, how do you get that out? How do you get those two teaspoons back out of that water after you dissolve it in there? Which is actually pretty hard, so. So basically, that's what the point of the study is, is how do, how do you remove Chromium Six from water? How can you remove it cost-effectively? And then how can you remove it for large flow rates common at a water utility? And testing was completed on several technologies over several years, and then two technologies were ultimately tested at Glendale, with variants of the process details tested on each of the technologies. And so from 2001 to 2003, 25 technologies were tested at university labs, and that research was led by LA Department of Water and Power. In the second phase, seven technologies were tested at small flow rates, led by Glendale. And, and one of the reasons for, for doing the testing on those, I guess, larger samples at Glendale was because we have some wells that have high concentrations of chromium. And then the, the last phase, from 2007 to 2015, two treatment facilities were built and to meet that, that goal of five parts per billion here, here at Glendale. And there's an oversight committee that looks at the testing and looks at the reports to, to validate the reports and make recommendations. And then there was funding from all of the agencies listed here, Water Research Foundation, Department of Public Health is now DDW, Division of Drinking Water. So the pilot studies were tested at low flows, and it's the weak base anion exchange, strong base anion exchange, and reduction coagulation filtration technologies. And they were, these were presented to the panel and recommended doing the demonstration scale testing of the WBA and the RCF at Glendale. Dr. Blute of Hazen &amp; Sawyer led, led those studies, and different flow rates for the two technologies, 425 GPM on the weak base anion exchange and 100 GPM on the reduction coagulation filtration, with 50% of the funding coming from a Prop 50 grant. So the, the weak base anion exchange facility is a single-pass ion exchange resin, and the resin is used to exchange chloride and hydroxide ions for the Chromium Six. And then, part of this technology then is you have to dispose of the spent resin when you're done. That's what they mean by single pass. You don't regenerate the resin and reuse it, you dispose of it. And then the reduction coagulation filtration would be to reduce the Chromium Six to Chromium Three by adding ferrous sulfate. And, and reduction is kind of the opposite of oxidation, so you reduce it down to, to Chromium Three, and you coagulate that Chromium Three into larger particles, like I talked about, then it goes into suspension, as it comes out of solution and goes into suspension, and then you can filter out the particles. And then, and then this process, then you dispose of that waste, this sludge that you generate from that. And it turns out, you know, depending on the flow rate, the RCF might be a little bit less expensive at the very high, high flow rates, and then that ion exchange, or the WBA, is less expensive at the lower flow rates. And that really, a lot of that has to do with the complicate, complication of running that RCF facility. It's a lot more complicated, there's a lot more parts and equipment and machinery that you have to, to operate, and that starts to pay for itself at those higher, at those higher flows. So basically, the WBA was chosen as the full-scale solution at the flow rates that we need, and, and because of the lower complexity, and also because of less water loss. The RCF facility, because you're generating that sludge, you're also losing some water. So you're pumping some of your water rates from your wells, running it through that process and losing some of that, whereas on the ion exchange, there's no loss. It just goes through the ion exchange media and pulls out all the Chromium Six. Right now, the WBA facility's offline and in the process of demolition, and the RCF facility's already been demolished, with construction of the new WBA underway at our Utility Operations Center, with March 2016 expected completion and operation. And then the final study, the, it's called the supplemental studies, under review by that expert panel right now, and we're in the process of submitting all our final grant reimbursements and those things to the state, which will, which will be great. Then we'll have a, basically a production facility in service at that point. And then I still have my favorite slide on the end, so if there's any questions about...
Yeah, question. The, the water, so the, the water that flows through the system, on, on its way out, are we, is that water put back into the water supply? Does some of it return to, I seem to recall that with the demonstration project, there was a portion of the water that was put into the river or back into the natural environment. But can, can you talk about the water usage, where that goes?
Yeah, so typically, we won't put any water into the river unless there's something, say, going on at the plant, or if we're redeveloping one of the wells. You know, if it's not drinkable at that point, but we need to run it to redevelop the wells. Or I think the, the other thing is, this is, this water goes through the Glendale Water Treatment Plant, which is part of the Glendale Operable Unit, which is also treating for VOCs, volatile organic compounds. And part of the requirements for that system is to, they call it a mass removal. So they, they try and run 5,000 GPM whether or not the treatment plant is fully running. So sometimes that might have to be diverted to waste if all the treatment trains aren't like fully up and running, basically, is why it would be discharged. But normally, for the Chromium Six on that ion exchange, 100% of it should go through into the system.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood, this is the first time I've sat through a presentation about Chromium Six, so I may have some questions that other people have asked in the past, and I apologize in advance for that, but I just want to make sure I understand. So 70% of the water that we use here in Glendale as consumers comes from MWD, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So 30% of the water that we use is produced from groundwater here?
Yes.
In, in the Glendale area?
In the Glendale area.
Okay. So when we talk about the presence of chromium in the water, we're talking about the presence of chromium in the water that Glendale's producing here from our own groundwater?
In the groundwater itself, in, in the, in the San Fernando Basin.
Okay. And it, that is before it's blended with?
Before it's treated.
Before it's treated and before it's blended?
Yes.
With the 70%?
Yes, and it's not necessarily directly blended with the 70%. We monitor the blend ratio and see what the chromium level is, and then we blend basically as much as we need to get it below that five parts, to stay well below.
All right, so currently, the water that we're drinking from our taps is at that threshold, the five parts?
Yeah, all of our, all of our water meets or exceeds all federal and state standards.
Okay. And part of that is from treatment that's being done before that water is blended, and part of it's because the water's blended after treatment? It's a combination of the two?
To some extent, yeah. I mean, there's times, so there's, let me think about this, I think there's nine wells right now that are part of that system, and depending on which wells you run, the blends change. So sometimes when you run them, it doesn't need the treatment, but we're actually going to be running the wells, the well with the highest chrome level, once we get that permanent facility online to take out all that chrome and help clean it up.
Okay. And just to make sure I understand, the presence of Chromium Six in these wells is from historical pollution going back decades, aerospace industry and things like that, and other types of heavy manufacturing, is that correct?
Some of it is. There's some naturally occurring as well.
Oh, okay.
Chromium itself, like the Chromium Three, I think it's, I had read it's about the 19th most common element on the earth. Chromium Six, there's some naturally occurring, and there's definitely some from industrial operations. And it is, this area was very significant during World War II production, and so some of, some of that comes from that time period, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my question is related, but she was, she was asking. We have, we have four sources of water in, from your previous presentation, I understand, we have four sources of water coming from, namely, from state water, Los Angeles, and Colorado, and local, four sources. So what are the percentage of the, this CR6 concentration in each of that? Is it, is it, one of them is worse than the other one, and how, how, how it is?
Yeah, the, the water from the San Fernando Basin is the worst, as far as that goes, and then even which particular wells. So the, the chromium pollution moves in a plume in the San Fernando Basin, and so it depends on where your well is extracting from, what the level will be.
So my next question is, can we change this proportion so that we don't get that pollution? Because we are paying a lot to, to kind of treat that. I mean, is it, is it possible to increase the proportion from the one which is cleaner and reduce from the other one which is not clean?
So part of the water we take from the Glendale Operable Unit is part of a superfund cleanup site, and there's the Glendale Chromium Operable Unit, which, there's a report in draft phase right now. Basically, that treatment is being paid for by what's called the Glendale Respondents Group, which is manufacturers or the, I guess, descendants of manufacturers who possibly contributed to, to putting that pollutant in there to begin with. So actually, we're actually drilling a well now, and we have one well that's online where it's very concentrated, and we're trying to actually pull out more as part of that superfund project to help clean the basin up. So our ratepayers aren't paying for that treatment at this point.
So that's water that has to be cleaned up. Polluters are required to clean it up, but instead of wasting it, we've been working with them for the past 10 years or more.
Yeah.
And being able to capture that water, once it's been cleaned up, and put it into our system, and that helps our ratepayers because that's, that's water that we essentially get for free. Our investment in this has been minimal. You saw one of the slides Mike showed you that had price tags on what each phase cost, and that has been picked up by those respondents and grants, a lot of, a lot of...
A lot of grants.
And, and research stipends that we've received to, to do this, but we've reaped the benefits of not wasting that water and being able to put it into the system. As Mike said, the water we purchase, obviously, meets all federal and state requirements, and anything we put into our pipes always meet all federal and state requirements.
And, and, you know, like we talked about a little bit prior, if we weren't taking that water and using it, the EPA would still require for it to be cleaned up, and it would be dumped down the river, and that would reduce the groundwater level in the San Fernando Basin, so it makes a lot more sense to be able to treat it and use it and conserve the resource.
So the economic, economic study is done?
And, and the permanent WBA facility is being paid for by the Respondents Group, so the city's not paying for that new facility.
That's at the, the Utility Operations Center?
Yes.
Yeah, that you, you'll, you'll see, yeah. So what, what kind of footprint are we talking about here? Very small, okay.
The original site was the first recycling center site that the city had, and that was moved out, and then the facility was put in there. And then there's a small operation that's next to that, and it's just going to be moved over, so it's, it's minimal. And, you know, there used to be railroad tracks that went through there. We bought those railroad tracks and had them removed, that gave us additional space, so we actually didn't lose much at all putting this plant there, and obviously reaped a great benefit from being out in front and a leader and treating this water. And as Mike said, water that would have, that had to be treated, would have gone down the river, and instead, we're putting it to good use, very low cost, as, as in nothing, so it's a good thing.
Yeah, I, I think given the uncertainty of the Sacramento Bay Delta, given the uncertainty of our imported water supplies, and on a cost basis, it makes sense for us to shore up this really important local supply. And I think the long-range goal is to have it, have the Chromium Six pumped up and out and completely cleaned, so that when that basin fills up again, you just have clean drinking water. How many years away from that are we?
You know, that's a good question. I, it's always 15. So I think when it started, it was 15, and now it's 15, you know? So, I mean, it could be 30 years out or something like that, but it's really, I mean, this project spans, you know, the past. I mean, we're helping, honestly, helping win World War II, as far as I can tell. And then, right now, it's in the present, because we need that water and we're... And then, right now, it's in the present, because we need that water and we're using it, and it's an important resource, but it stretches out to the future as well. We're cleaning up that basin just for future generations, so.
So it's just like my age, doesn't change.
Are we in year 16 of the 15-year plan? Is that the?
Yeah, basically, I think it is, right around 2000, when it started. And it'll be, I guess, a little more focused now, we'll have that permanent site, we'll be getting a well with really high concentration and pulling that out, so.
Is there a risk that using that high-concentration well is going to expand the plume any, or is it sort of positioned to pull it out?
You know, actually, it's going to concentrate it.
Ah, okay.
So the idea is that it kind of pulls it and concentrates that plume into that one area.
Any other questions? Next item, please.
Six is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes or three minutes. Commission may request, excuse me, may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The general manager may refer to the matter to appropriate staff for investigation and report.
Madam Clerk, I have no cards. Do you have any cards at the desk? Any members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, next item, please.
Seven, agenda forecast.
So, Mr. President, members of the commission, we have the electrical storage issue for next month, legislative quarterly update, which will more or less, when all the dust settles, will come back and tell you what the governor signed, if in fact he made any changes, what may have been shelved or vetoed, and so we'll have the details on all of those. Again, our ongoing water conservation and drought update. This particular month, we will be talking to you about the drought rate. So I have to be back to council by early November to report to them about the drought rate. As you recall, we entered Phase Three, I kept the drought rate, or recommended we keep the drought rate at Phase Two, which council agreed to, and so now we'll give an update on where our finances are, what our projections are for the winter, whether or not we need to move to the Phase Three drought rate, or whether we're okay where we're at, just to give you a little bit of insight into that, because that's not something that we had included in the drought report, but we're right there. Our revenue is projected from our cost of service analysis and our budgetary projections, you know, it's minimal. The impact has been minimal. I mean, the drought rate has covered us, and it doesn't appear that we're going, if you asked me today, I'd say I don't think we're going to need to move into Phase Three. Of course, we'll go on a month-to-month basis, but again, we're moving into the winter, so that's naturally the time when water use is down. So we've done, we've done pretty well in that regard as well, but that'll be really a big part of the October presentation, we'll be talking about that. And then back again in November with our continuing water conservation, we have our strategic plan quarterly update, and then in December, and again, we didn't project anywhere past here, because we start to talk about the holidays, see what people's holiday schedules are like, and so as we get to Christmas and New Year's and even Thanksgiving, we'll see. There's an opportunity for us to do some combining of things if we wanted to take one of those holidays, have our meeting, skip our meeting for that particular, but, and I anticipate, we're looking at a couple of other things, I didn't want to put them on here right now, so I'll bring those back to you next month of some presentations for you. I just didn't want to put something on here that we couldn't, we weren't ready to bring back. I don't know that we're really, we talk about the Grayson Power Plant, I don't think we have anything of substance greater than what we showed you when we went through the IRP and the decision to go forward, but I think as we get past the new year, we may have, we may have some more there. And we'll come back on a brief capital improvement project update, since we have Grandview Substation, it's a really big project, nice project. We continue to do our water infrastructure upgrades. I know you received an overview last meeting or the meeting before, but we'll keep you posted on those as well. And of course, anything else you'd like.
Budget, I know it's usually around maybe April, May or so?
Yeah, so once we get past the new year, we'll come to you with a new schedule. We try to put these schedules on a 12-month basis, so for the new calendar year, and then we'll roll into their budget presentation. Won't have any rate issues that I can foresee, all of our rates are still in effect, so, but we will give you a budgetary, probably, that's probably about right, April or May, maybe the May meeting, we'll see.
Anyone have any recommended changes for our forecast?
I have a question for Mr. Zern that might inform a potential recommendation for an agenda item, and that is related to the artificial turf law that will be coming into effect. So can you talk a little bit about what that timing is, and then I guess, related to that, maybe more important than the timing is, how is the staff looking at that with respect to simply, you know, allowing it to go through, as compared to then, you know, other end of the spectrum would be promoting the availability of folks in the community to use artificial turf in order to reduce water usage? So can you speak a little to that?
I can, and I guess I'd put it this way, the Community Development Department that'll be taking the lead on this is finishing up a, they have a consultant that's doing an overall report on their vegetation requirements, including artificial turf. So my thought was I'd have them come and give you a presentation, once they've made that presentation to council. That's something that they're involved with, and so once they've done that, they can talk to you a little bit about it, and probably be more informed on what regulations they're going to require in relation to live vegetation percentages versus artificial turf. You know, really, as far as it looks and as far as I read the bill, we're not going to have a whole lot of choice, so at least artificial turf on front yards for Glendale. They've always been, always been able to put them in your backyard and your side yard, so this will be the front yards. And for us, it's one option for water conservation, and obviously, if folks, it appeals to them, they can afford it, it's a little bit more expensive than natural turf or even drought-tolerant landscaping in a lot of cases. That's certainly available, and we'll promote that to the extent, you know, benefits us. So I think for me, that would be the best thing, is to bring them back to you and give you the overall view of how it's going to fit into Glendale-specific versus the zoning code and some other things. So that's really, that's really where the crux of this is, it's not within Water and Power, it has to be in the zoning and planning operations. And I don't know, Mr. Camargo, what their timeline on that is, but by next meeting, I'll be able to tell you that, so you have an idea of when we might bring it back to you.
Yeah, I'd be very interested in hearing that. I think there is a great nexus in terms of the long-term effects of installing these types of ground coverings, in terms of potential impacts on water and the sewer system. Anyone who's ever played soccer up at the Glendale Sports Complex has probably had the experience that I had of coming home and trying to get all of the hundreds of tiny particles of plastic out of your child's socks with tweezers. So, I mean, these plastic, these, you know, particles of plastic do not biodegrade, which is why, I guess, you know, people want them. But the problem is that then they can get into our waterways, they become, you know, they don't break down naturally in the environment, so I have concerns and want to know, you know, what kind of recommendations are going to be coming out, understanding it's not under your purview.
Right.
That there's potential, and, you know, are they going to be recyclable? Are we going to require that they recycle these materials? I mean, they are, it is plastic, so.
We will need to get a better, I think, a more explicit interpretation, but what I can tell you, the way the law is written, we're going to be hard-pressed to put any kind of demands on people that would prohibit them or make it unreasonably difficult for them to put it in. And if that is what the market has available, whether it's granulated rubber or granulated plastic products that help with the drainage and the whole system works, I'm not sure we're going to have a lot of ability to regulate that. But we'll know a little bit more in, I think, when they finish their report, we'll get a better idea on exactly what the final bill is and how it was written up, and make sure that that doesn't get amended in any way by the governor as well. But again, it was written pretty tight, and we asked on that, we wrote letters on that as well, asking for some more flexibility and local control on that, but, I mean, the way it's written is as good as we were able to get it, and that is, and MWD supported it, but it was, because, you know, there are concerns on both sides. There's folks that say that some of the environmental impacts are not as great, others that say it is, it generates more heat and these kind of things, but at the end of the day, I, to be all, in all honesty, I think we're going to be hard-pressed to regulate it beyond tying it into our live vegetation, so hopefully you don't have just property line to property line turf, but you have to have some live vegetation as well.
Mr. Zern, since this isn't agendized for today, I hate to cut off this discussion because it is interesting, but I think we better agendize it for a future agenda.
So that's where I'll start, is by having CDD come and make their presentation to you on where they're at with theirs.
Thank you very much.
Start from there. So might we have this on the next agenda then, so that we can, well, just to have an initial conversation about the state of the law and where the bill, the way the bill was drafted?
I will have the update on the law as part of the legislative update.
And we can get an update again from CDD once the ordinance is in place. I'd also like to add that when you are reviewing that and bringing that to us, if we can talk about infiltration, groundwater infiltration on those systems as well, so that we can, we can maybe have a utility angle towards reviewing what the implementation of that bill might be. Any other changes? Seeing none, next item, please.
Eight, adjourned.
Their motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Their second.
A second?
Without objection, we are adjourned.